All right, let's call this study session of October 6, 2020 to order. And is Aaron with us?
He is.
Since this is going to be all about Aaron, we'll have him do the allegiance.
Excellent.
Oh, he must be muted.
He's totally muted.
Aaron, you're muted.
All right. I'll start, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
Nations under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. So. Mr. B. Miller is here to discuss the 2021 budget with us.
He's muted.
Aaron, you're muted.
There we go.
There we go. All right.
Uh, so I'm going to start by sharing the screen. We're going to go over just a very fast. The budget, budget process and budgeting reminder, I think it's one of the best practices just to kind of go over a little bit of information. Whenever the budget is, the new budget is provided. So I just want to talk a little bit about the 2021 budget. It was built using realistic, albeit conservative revenue assumptions and then matching expenses to those revenues. We want to match expenses to revenues because we don't want to say this is what we want to buy, this is what we want to do, and then match revenues to that level. It's not a, it's an unsustainable budget practice to do that. So we go by assuming our revenues and then making sure that the expenditures stay within those levels. So by the end of the current year, which is 2020, the council must adopt a balanced budget where resources at least meet the planned expenditures for the next year. So all governments save the feds have to have a balanced budget. And so what the proposed budget is, it is balanced for 2021. The budget, the budget process we use is what's called an incremental budgeting process. And so what we do is we take the 2020 budget, remove any one-time expenses that are included in there. And then use some assumptions for incremental increases. And then that becomes the 2021 base. And from there, depending on funding. The, the budget is, is built, it's increased, it's decreased, but whatever, whatever needs to happen. So we use an incremental based budgeting system. One-time resources, including any accumulated fund balance is used for one-time expenses. And those one-time expenses are generally capital or major maintenance activities. You could throw studies in there if they're not, if they're not, you know, an annual type of thing. So there are, there is a little bit of flexibility in there, but we want to make sure that one-time resources only fund one-time expenses. And the budget process overall is a tool for control, management and planning. And at the end of the day in, in December, the resulting appropriation that will be approved by council. Gives us the legal authority to expend funds. So even though we. Provide a balanced budget, if revenues look like they're going to come in higher than expected. We don't need to go back to council and have a supplemental done for increased revenues or decreased revenues. But if expenses are going to come in higher than we have budgeted, that requires council action because the authority to expend can only come from council. So I want to talk a little bit about the fund structure, the governmental accounting and governmental, governmental budgeting is a little bit different just because we have what's called fund accounting. And funds are a set of self-balancing accounts, which include both resources and expenditures. And ultimately what the city budget is, it's a big collection of those individually balanced funds. General fund resources can be used for any good governmental purpose. While the resources and all the other funds, special revenue enterprise, which is our utilities, internal service, which includes EM and R. As well as pension trust and permanent funds are reserved and they can only be used to support the allowable activities for which they are collected. So the, the example that often is used, we can't use sewer funds to pay for more police officers unless those police officers are going to be doing sewer work. So we can't mix and match, mix and match funds between different activities.
Aaron, I'm going to stop you right there. You know, how specific do you need to be there? I'm just, I'm just kidding. Your example of police officers doing work with the sewer system. Trying to think outside the box.
They do some dirty work, but.
There you go. All right.
So the city funds, just to give examples of, of the types of funds that were in the, in the bullet above. Of course you have your general fund and we have three special revenue funds, street fund, tourism and capital resources. And street, uh, special revenue funds are designed so that reserved revenues. Special revenues can only be created when there are reserved revenues to, that, that need to be spent in a particular way. Years ago. Governments used to create special revenue funds, almost as special expense funds, like we want to. We want to know how much we're spending on this particular activity and you create a special revenue fund and do that. Well, several years ago. One of the accounting boards came and said, no, 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 that's not the intent. Special revenue funds have to be dedicated revenues for a specific purpose. No one said how much of the revenue sources that go into those funds need to be dedicated. So a group, Government Finance Officers Association has decreed that 20% of revenues in a special revenue fund need to be for that purpose. Debt service fund, that's where we pay our bond payments out of, capital projects. We'll talk about those a little bit in a bit, but those are where we plan for our, mostly our general government. And which general fund and street capital projects. Capital projects that exist in the water sewer storm and solid waste fund, they are budgeted in those funds. Those funds are meant to be treated as a business. And so those capital projects also are budgeted within those funds. So the capital project fund really is only for street activities and general fund capital activities. Enterprise funds, those are our utility funds and they are designed to run like a business rates. And other types of fees are to support ongoing operations, maintenance and necessary capital. Internal service funds, those are funds that are also meant to be run like a business. The difference between the enterprise funds and internal service funds really is that internal service funds, we are the customer. And enterprise funds, you know, rate payers of the customer and the city is the customer and internal service funds. Pension trust fund, this is a legal fund that we have to have for the firefighters pension fund. And then we do have a permanent fund for the library endowment fund. Permanent funds, we can only use interest earned on the permanent investment. And I believe in the library endowment fund, it was $100,000. Endowment, and so we can't spend any amount that would put us under that $100,000. Level. We'll talk about the structural imbalance a little bit more, I think, well, show you the, the schedule here in the next slide. And we'll talk about this a little bit more at our next meeting. Like other governments, expense drivers for the city of Shelton continue to increase at a rate that exceeds revenue growth. Right now, we don't really have a specific mechanism in place to compensate for this imbalance. And we need to start, start looking at that. The driving force behind the expense increases are of course salary and benefits. And those types of increases. And at the same time, we like other governments are hampered in our revenue generation by the 1% limitation on property tax. That's our second biggest tax. And with expenses increasing at a rate closer to four, four and a half percent, revenues are increasing at a rate closer to three and a half, 3.7%. And so what this graph kind of demonstrates is the imbalance moving forward. You can see in 2020, we look like we're in a pretty good spot. The 2021 proposed budget is balanced, so those lines intersect there. And then as you move out, that, that gap gets wider and wider. And every year we have to either find other revenues or reduce expenses in order to bring that back into balance. Again, we'll talk about that much more when we provide our 10-year forecast at the next meeting. For the general fund. So kind of the schedule that we have moving forward, obviously you are just getting the budgets today, so you haven't had any time to take a look at them. We do have special meetings already scheduled for the 20th of October and the 3rd of November. We certainly can continue to schedule special meetings out. It's, it's really to the council's desire how much they want to meet on this. Today, we, Jeff will go over his budget letter and then we'll provide an overview of the proposed book. Then on the 20th, what we're hoping to do is work through the 10-year forecast. We'll have a couple of different assumptions based on that, just so that council can ask some questions and kind of see what we're looking at. We've also included a six-year capital plan in the proposed budget. We'll talk about that a little bit in, in a bit. But that's important because it really shows what the capital needs are looking out. It's a six-year plan, so it's the current year and it goes out through, current year 2021, I should say. And it goes through 2026. It's not set in stone except for 2021. But it is just an opportunity to look and do some advanced planning on the city's capital needs and how we're going to pay for those capital improvements. And then of course we'll have some question and answer time. Then on the meeting on the 3rd, we are planning on providing the third quarter update. I will say that that may have to slip till the 17th, we'll just see where we can get on that. And then again, any other remaining Q and A. And then of course additional meetings if, if requested. And then we're hoping on 12/1, the 1st of December to, to adopt the budget. That doesn't have to be, it could happen on the 15th of December. So that's just again, just part of our plan there. So. That's really what I had in terms of just kind of a kickoff of the budget meeting today. Happy to answer any questions. And then Jeff can get into his letter and then we'll walk a little bit through the book.
All right, any questions for Aaron? Okay.
All right. So we did just receive communication from Deputy Mayor Peterson. She's having difficulty with her internet, so I believe she's going to join us by phone. I did want to present my letter, I won't read the entire thing, but I did want to highlight a few pieces of information. The 2021 proposed budget totals 31.7 million. And of that, 12.3 million is the, in our general fund. That is roughly similar, about a tenth of a percent less than the adopted 2020 budget that council adopted at the end of 19. The budget was built using the council's strategic plan to guide our decisions and reflect our shared commitment to providing valuable government services in the most cost-efficient manner possible. And as you can see by the graph that Director B. Miller showed on slide four, I believe it was, was his earlier presentation. It's a becoming increasingly difficult and 2021 was a difficult year. As with previous years, we did start in a deficit position when we started working on this back in June. And as we were working through that budget process. We also had to deal with the unknowns related to COVID. And those included the same things that we've mentioned on previous occasions. How long would the stay-home order last from the governor? How long, how deep would the impact to the current and future economy be? And then how fast could the, the overall economy recover? And those are still questions we have and still questions we're grappling with. As a result of all this, the city's general fund revenue budget for 2021 is slightly below than the 2020 adopted revenues. And almost $600,000 less than the actual 2019 revenues. With this reduction in the revenue budget, departments requests for budget increases for expansion or creation of new programs went unfunded. And in fact, the general fund has reduced expenses for 2020, excuse me, 2021 by eliminating five positions from the organization throughout the general fund. There are no new initiatives or expansions of programs funded in 2021 as part of this budget. And we stay true to our budget philosophy that we develop realistic revenues for the upcoming year and then fit expenses within that. As Aaron mentioned before, trying to do it the other way around is not sustainable and not a good idea. Going forward. Like most other government entities, we have a sustainability issue where expenses increase each year. And revenues do not keep pace with those expense. The raising of those expenses. While it, the 2021 budget is balanced, it is, it doesn't fully address the sustainability of the budget going forward. And that was reflected in that graph. That Aaron showed us a little bit earlier. And this budget is the culmination of an almost year-long collaborative effort between all of the city staff here. Council members and discussions with the member of the community. And I really thank everybody. That participated in this process and although it was difficult, we all pulled together and produced something that meets all our legal requirements. And funds what we're able to fund using the council's strategic priorities as a goal. And I particularly want to thank Aaron and his team at the, in the finance office, working on this budget while working on various other things, some of which you'll hear about later tonight. Putting this together, getting it done on time for all of you to consider. And I turn this back over to Aaron unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, Aaron.
All right, so having this meeting on Zoom and not having the ability to kind of walk through the pages together may be a little bit awkward. So I thought what we could do. Is I would just kind of go through and let you know of a couple of items that I think would be of. Interest to the council as they read through this information. The information presented, very similar to the way that we presented it in the 2020 budget book. You know, we, we're going to continue to expand on that effort moving forward. But the budget overview will give a really good high-level view of what we're doing. It talks a lot about the general fund, it talks a lot about general fund expenses and revenues, but it also provides information on taxes, what types of taxes we have, what are the stipulations behind them, so on and so forth. So that's going to be a really, a really good overview for, for the council and residents who might want to look at this. By the way, this is on our website now. So anybody who wants to can go to the front page of the website, I believe there's a link on the front page to this. Moving forward then, the first bit of the budget is going to be at a, at a high level. I did want to make mention on page five, we've been going through a significant. Accounting process, chart of accounts process. And one of the things that we're doing is we are now in our chart of accounts, really trying to separate out expenses so that we show what the activities are. In that vein, I'm going to use the city clerk as an example. The city clerk now has her own budget department, her own budget that is shown in it. In years, pre, in previous years, city clerk was split between the city council budget, the city manager budget and the finance budget. And that makes it a little bit harder to see how the activities and functions of the city clerk are happening. So we've created her own department on that and so on and so forth. So as you look at page five, you'll see the departments represented maybe just a bit of a different way than you're used to. Moving forward then, sales tax information begins on page 17. It will give you a lot of information on our sales tax, on streamlined sales tax, on the collection process. And then a history, at least beginning back in 2018 of actual collections versus budget versus. The proposed budget and as well as next, the current year estimate. Property tax, our second biggest, sales tax is our biggest revenue source, property tax are second. So that comes right after that on the heels of that. Speaking of property tax, we'll be bringing forward the first hearing on property tax, I believe on October 20th to council. We have not yet received the preliminary numbers from the county assessor. So we've taken a couple of pretty big swags here on what total assessed valuation will be and what our property tax levels will be. The, the, in terms of actual revenue generated, we know the rules that we get 1% from increase from the previous year. Plus new construction, plus any state adjustments. The new construction and the state adjustments are the, are the ones that we just won't know. So at this point in time, we're feeling very comfortable using our 2020 new construction number as well as state assessment. We think that's going to be high. But that's okay, even if, even if we adopt a budget that is higher than what we can actually collect, we will still only collect what's appropriate. And then 1% off of that moving forward. Another bit of information on assessed, on, on property taxes here. Back in July, the, well, as you, as you're well aware, property tax can increase by 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is lower. Back in July, the implicit price deflator was at 1.3%, great, 1%, that's what we planned on and started moving forward. That got reduced down to 0.6% at the end of August or end of, end of August, early September. So the property tax revenues that we have are based on the 1%. So we will be bringing what's called a substantial need ordinance forward to council. If council chooses to adopt the substantial need ordinance, we would still be able to collect the full 1%. If not, we would only be able to collect up to the IPD. And that would become our new highest lawful levy. And so everything moving forward would tip from that spot, if that makes sense. We'll talk more about this on the 20th when we bring it forward, but I just did want to give a heads up on that. Did want to also mention the taxes begin on page 19, a summary, a further summary of taxes. At a, at a higher level, which includes our BNO, city, city utility tax and non-city utility tax and, and other items. Finally, at least for this particular part, beginning on page 25, we have our capital and maintenance projects. And the second to last paragraph on page 25 talks about that the city adopts capital projects on a project-based budget. Which means when the council adopts a capital project, that project stays budgeted for all intents and purposes until completion. At the end of 2021, if we have a project for a million dollars and we've done half of it, spent 500,000. We don't need to bring the, the project back as part of the budget. That budget will continue forward until completion. The only time that we would have to come back on a capital project is if it turns out that expenditures are going to be in excess of the amount council has budgeted for that project. So we're putting that very clearly in the book this year. I think it will really help with some confusion on total budget for projects and where we are in projects. And, and so I think that's going to be a good change. Moving forward to the next page on page 26, that's where you're going to start to see the six-year capital project summary. And plan. The, the rules of the road for the city of Shelton, at least this year, as we developed the six-year plan, was projects budgeted for 2021 have to be fully funded. So we're not going to budget a project that's going to cost a million dollars if we've only secured $200,000 of funding. We can budget $200,000 of that project, maybe it's a design, maybe it's a, a piece of it. But we won't budget the full enchilada in that case, in the full million dollars. When those types of cases happen, we would bring the next piece of that puzzle or a next piece of that project to council for, for. Budget authority. So you will not see, I hope, in the resources funds on the projects for 2021, any of the line where it says unidentified funding gap. Moving forward in time then, 2022 and forward. Those are planned, we're, by adopting the budget and the capital plan that's included. You are not obligating any funding, any budget, any type of agreement to do future projects. It just simply is to give council and residents an opportunity to see what the, what is seen as the most important projects coming up. They may not all be funded in many cases, if you look at the, when you look at the facilities capital plan on page 27. Outside of the 2021 capital projects, there's a lot that are not funded and it's not funded on purpose because it's probably going to be general fund monies that fill that gap. And, and up until, until we're ready to build 2022, we just don't know how much we're going to have. So what this does though, is it allows council to look at it and say, what is the $90,000 for the library debt necessary? I'm just looking at a particular project. So hopefully this will provide you with a lot of information about our capital needs moving forward. Overall, the, the plan is in thousands. So when you look at this and you see something that says 90, that's a $90,000 project, not $90. And over the course of the six-year plan, we've got 61,891,000 of projects on the plan. But if, again, we don't have 61,891,000 of funding at this point in time. So wanted to, to walk you through that. After that set of information is, is gone through, the, the more detailed information on the budget begins on page 41. Starts with the general fund and it should look very similar to the 2020 budget book for you. The difference that we have on this is as you turn the pages, I'm just starting with administrative services here. I don't know if, if it's up on any of your screens. But as you turn the pages, you'll get to the, near the end, and we really do show a lot of expenditure. So we show some high-level, you know, salary and benefits. Supplies, equipment, and then further on, in that same section, we will really break that down for you. So you'll get a lot more information on what is rolling up into those numbers. We want to make sure that you have all of. We want to make sure that you have all of that at your fingertips. Outside of that relatively brief overview, I don't have much else. Give, you know, we want to make sure that you have time to go through and ask us any questions for the meeting on the 20th. But unless there's anything specific that you'd like me to address, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any? I have one quick little one, Aaron. I think I heard you say a little bit ago that if we had budgeted $200,000 for a project, and then the project came in at $800,000, I think you said. So are you suggesting that we will not borrow money at that time to finish that project? That's what I want to hear.
Yeah, I am, so I am suggesting that the city should start looking at weaning the debt that we have down and start looking at ways that we can become more proactive on a pay-as-you-go process. That being said, there are sometimes going to be reasons that the council may want to borrow money. But that needs to be a clear, thoughtful, well-thought-out determination of why. The why is the how's and the what's about it.
Yes.
So, yeah, we have, in our, in our capital plan, I guess another thing that we said is, don't use bond or debt as one of your funding sources. That's going to have to be a separate conversation moving forward. And so I would agree with you there.
Good. Anybody else?
It's not so much a question, it's for this moment, but for our future conversations, and that is taking a look at, you know, where revenues and expenses meet in 2020, or 2022, rather. I know that we have basically an opportunity to have a balanced budget, you know, for this next year, but I would really like to hear in our next conversations what the plans are to start getting that information more readily available into the community and start sparking some conversations about that. Because, yes, I agree that we have our strategic plan, and I know that we do go out to our community members to receive feedback on a regular basis. And I think that we need to, you know, have a plan to get out ahead of this much earlier and to get community feedback sooner, rather than later in 2021, because we're going to have to make some decisions, deep decisions, you know, this next year.
So I have on my briefing schedule with all of you to talk about various options, what it looks like moving forward in 2022 and beyond. I don't want to start each year in a deficit position like we have been. So building the capacity within the city in order to not be, not feel like we're trying to address the fire closest to our feet. But, you know, being able to look further out and look out on the horizon to plan for those types of things and put in place a plan here where we address those items early and we know they're coming, rather we can, we can address those how we want to, rather than having them happen too fast. And that's definitely something I'm going to have a conversation with council about over the coming months.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? So we can adjourn, the study session will be adjourned at, what is it here? 5:35, a regular council meeting will begin in 6 o'clock. Thank you.